On the fourth day of November, I think the first item on the agenda is the Penal Alliance for Economic Growth and Achieve Penal.
Mr. Mayor, the, actually, the first item tonight, there was a, we have an agenda that was amended.
So this is the wrong agenda.
So the first one at 5:30 is the Fiscal Year 20 Proposed Annual Street Maintenance Program. Just to make sure everybody's working off of the same.
The one that's put up here has the wrong agenda. Way to go, Carla.
Sorry. That was mean.
That's very mean.
All right, I'm sorry. So first item on the agenda then is the discussion of the full year proposed annual street maintenance program with our favorite people from the Public Works Department.
Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. We're here to talk about the pavement management system and this year's pavement maintenance program. So in 2018, we did recalibrate our pavement management system. MIS came out and did a full evaluation of our street network and basically recalibrated our model to make sure that the information that we were getting out was good information based on what we were putting in on an annual basis. Not a lot of change. We did drop from a PCI average of 75 down to 72. I really felt like that was going to happen, so.
What's, what, what is that?
So each pavement section throughout the city is, is given a PCI, a pavement index or condition index. And it's based on a rating system from zero to 100. 100 being a perfect pavement, zero being really nothing there, nothing you could drive on. So we had had an average of 75 percent in our pavement index throughout the city, and it dropped to 72. My gut feeling all along was it was right around 70, based on looking at other municipalities' models and just looking at industry standards out there and based on our pavement conditions.
We dropped a little.
We dropped a little, but I think it's accurate. And we, we feel pretty good about that because if you look at the average across the U.S., it's 60 to 65. And, you know, less than 1 percent of the agencies that IMS look at have a score that's greater than, than 75 PCI. So I think we're right in a good ballpark. I think we've got a healthy system. We've got a ways to go, and we just need to continue to monitor it and make good decisions. But we'll talk about some of the decisions that we make and why and how that may impact us negatively in the future as we go along. So generally, we like to see in a excellent category a minimum of eight, or 15 percent of your roads in that excellent category. And we're currently sitting at around 18 percent. So we're looking very good there. And then your backlog or the things that you need to start working on, obviously anything above 85 percent, you're, you're really not going to have to do much to that pavement. Maybe a fog seal every once in a while, some crack sealing, and maybe some pottle repairs. So as you get down to the, the lesser or lower PCIs, you start to generate what's called a backlog, and that's the work that needs to be done to maintain that pavement. Obviously, the lower the PCI, the more work that it's going to take to get that road and maintain it at a, a safe level, which our, our target is anywhere between 70 and 75 percent. So right now, our, I don't want to get into a lot of the detail. You don't want that backlog to exceed 20 percent, and we're currently sitting right around 6 percent. So I think we're still doing pretty good, but again, we'll talk a little more about that here in just a minute. So I'm gonna kind of skip over some of this information, the life cycle estimates. It gets into a lot of detail, and we could spend a day talking about it. But the bottom line is, our target revenues to be able to spend on our pavement maintenance program should be around $5.5 million a year. Now, we're less than that, and as revenue generation increases with increases in the HIRF dollars and half-cent sales tax, we'll obviously be putting that towards pavement maintenance. But right now, we come short of what we feel we need to maintain that 75 PCI. And this is our, our pavement deterioration chart. Obviously, all pavements start out at 100 percent, and then as the life of that pavement goes, the PCI decreases. And these are just three examples. The one in red, hopefully your colors are, are the same that I'm looking at. The one in red is your, your local streets, and then the one in blue is your major arterials. So obviously, the more traffic and the type of vehicles that travel on a road are going to impact that differently. So your local streets are going to have a much longer lifespan and probably hold their PCIs versus the arterials, which are going to deteriorate at a much higher rate. And of course, it generates more maintenance needs. And then here's our list of the different pavement treatments, and then the PCIs associated or when you should be using those in general. Fog seals, 75 to 85. Slurry seals, 65 to 75. Rubberized chip seals in that 60 percent area. Mill and overlays, that 50 percent area. Partial reconstructs, around 40 percent. And then full reconstructs, anything 45 and below. 35 is that, that magic mark where there's really nothing you can do to that pavement to maintain the, the rideability. It's, it's gone beyond what you can do without replacing it. And then we're going to look at the different treatments and the cost per square yard. The picture shows you a fog seal. That's basically a paint job for asphalt. It adds the asphalt oil to the top of that pavement to rejuvenate that wearing surface and hopefully slow down that oxidation process that happens with the Arizona sun and quite frankly, with all asphalt's around the United States. And of course, weather conditions, the more moisture, the dirtier the streets, the quicker those, that wearing surface is going to deteriorate. So we're looking at about $1.50, about $1.75 per square yard, depending on, on where bids come in. And then you have our slurry seal, which is actually a, a smaller aggregate mixed in with a asphalt Portland cement. That gives you about a three-quarter inch wearing surface, maybe just a little less than that. And that's $2.85 to $3.85 per square yard. And then you get to our rubber chip seal, probably our most, what I consider our most cost-effective treatment. It's not the smoothest to drive on, but it, it definitely has the longest-lasting benefit to pavement. And that's around $4.50 to $5.50 a square yard. And then you have our, our mill and overlay. That's where you, you remove a, the top portion of the asphalt, grind that away, and then put down a new wearing surface of asphalt. The picture you're looking at is actually Cottonwood Lane when we did that paving five, six years ago. I can't remember exactly when it was. And that's around $13 to $19 per square yard, depending on the depth and the type of asphalt and a lot of other conditions. And then you have the partial reconstruction. If you had a chance to get out to Rancho Grande this last year, that was what we considered a partial reconstruction. That's where you go in and you actually remove the asphalt. You do some work to the subgrade. If it's a full reconstruction, you're removing all 12 inches of your subgrade, adding new subgrade, and starting basically from scratch. We went in and we amended the subgrade in Rancho Grande. We actually incorporated with a boatbag machine a Portland cement material, which helps harden that subgrade. And we were able to really bridge some of the issues we were having with the poor soil conditions in that area. And then we come in with a new layer of asphalt. Really a, a good project. We, we felt it was a very successful project, and we're going to be incorporating that with several of our subdivisions this year, and I'll, I'll get into that a little bit later. And then here's a picture of Main Street, and actually, a photo of our, our train depot that, that used to be there. So that was a full reconstruct where we had to go down to, down to the subgrade and start from there. And you're looking at $37 to $50 a square yard, depending on the extent, type of road, and those types of things. So our, our Lucid program spits out a lot of, a lot of information. And we're able, we're able to go through and, and take those spreadsheets, and it will populate our GIS system and actually map out what its recommendations are calling for. And then there's a lot of back and forth between our staff as we move through that project. And we would show you the actual Lucidity program, but it's very boring. It is a simple spreadsheet. And unless you're really good, like Chris over here, you're really not going to understand it. But once you have it populate the GIS, then you go to the next picture here, and it shows the collectors and arterials that were populated as a, as a single scenario. Now, we can manipulate the data, change the parameters, base it just off of what our budget is, base it off of what we want the PCI to be. I mean, there's a lot of different ways to manipulate the system, and it'll output a lot of different options for us. So we take this type of information, and then we refine the program. Obviously, if there's only two streets in the subdivision and the rest of them aren't being called up, we're probably not going to go in and repair those two streets. We're going to look at that subdivision as a whole. We may put that off for two years and, and focus on a different subdivision. So we make those kinds of decisions through this process. The next one is basically one that was done in the past, and it showed our residential areas that needed treatments. And I can't remember, I think the yellow was fog seals and the green were slurry seals or vice versa. I just can't remember. But it would, it would give us that output. We would go out there, do our field inspections, see if it was really accurate, and then make some decisions from there. And then the decision process, for the last few years, we've been doing open houses. And we had one last week. It was not very well attended, but it was also the last game of the World Series. So that may have had an impact. Or we're doing such a great job, nobody cares, and I don't think that's the case. But these next two slides, and then I'll go to a third slide, and we'll talk about it. This was our PCI back in 2010 when we rolled out the first pavement index with Lucidity. And then the next one is our, our current PCIs after our last update this, this past year. But when you look at the two graphs, what I want you to see is the, the bars are starting to get depressed in the recent years. So our, our good and excellence are starting to get a little bit smaller in percentage, and our fair, moderate to poor are starting to increase. So we're starting to see a trend that obviously we're concerned with. But when you look at the finances that we have to work with, we still have to make those tough decisions on where can we cut corners and kind of push that asphalt life out. And we're going to continue to do that until, you know, we see different revenue streams that we're able to take advantage of. So for this project year, we've come up, I should say, we alternate each year between focusing on, on local streets, and then we focus on arterials the next year. And this, this coming year, Fiscal Year 20, we are, we are looking at our local streets. With the exception of our, our capital improvement projects, sometimes they'll be looking at arterials. But they're bigger projects, and they're outside of our, our $1.5 million that we use for maintenance of our, our roadway system. So here's this year's program. We had one area that was actually identified for a partial reconstruction, and that's out in our industrial area, and that was Adams, Jefferson, and Ninth Street. Obviously, we're starting to see a lot of infill activity in our industrial area, as well as some of our greenfield areas. On this map, if you look at Adams Street just to the west, that entire site is now Southwest Gas new facility. So that was a project that was added since this aerial photo was taken. But this was identified as a partial reconstruct, very similar to VIP Boulevard two years ago, where we looked at that and said, that's a lot of money. It's going to take about $1 million to do this particular project. Can we get away with a Cape seal like we did on VIP? And we're very pleased with how VIP is performing. It's holding up well. And we think we're going to have the same success on this roadway with a Cape seal. Cape seal's going to cost us right around $170,000. If we were to do a, a partial reconstruct, we're looking in that $1 million range for these roads. The next is a, a very large photo of the different project areas that we're going to be focus on, focusing on. And they're all chip seals, rubberized chip seals on this map. So if you start in the north, you'll see Copper Vista dropping down to Coyote Ranch. And then you'll see the greens, which are just past the rodeo grounds out there, just north of our golf course. You've got the Lynx, which is just south of our golf course. Desert Sky Ranch, which is south of Cottonwood, or excuse me, Cortson. Let's see. We have, again, the previous map showed Adams, Jefferson, and Ninth Street. And then we have the west side area, and that's south of Cottonwood Lane, west of Penel, north of Florence, and just east of, I believe, the road is Schultz. So that entire area, we're looking at a rubber chip seal. And then the last area that we have is Laurel, Brenda, and Manor are the three main streets in that area. It's kind of a, a three subdivisions that, that aren't really one formal subdivision, but that area just south of Cottonwood Lane and north of McMurray. And then we have Park View down in the southeast corner of town. It's actually Park View Three. So those are the areas that we are currently looking at. Obviously, we have to go through our bid process, and we'll look at how those prices come in. But based on the industry numbers that we're looking at right now with similar bids around the state, we think we can get this project done with the amount that we have budgeted, which is the $1.5 million. And then we have several CIP projects identified this year. And the, the first two are very similar to the Rancho Grande project. We have Western Manor, and that's the subdivision that is north of Gila Bend Highway, just west of VIP Boulevard, so kind of our west edge of town if you don't take into consideration that Francisco Grande is our actual west edge of town. So we'll be doing a very similar project that we did in Rancho Grande. We'll be removing all the asphalt, evaluating the subgrade. If we need to incorporate a, a stabilization of that subgrade, we'll be doing that, similar to Rancho Grande. However, we did dig some test pits in that area, and we're hoping that we find better conditions than we did in Rancho Grande and maybe save some money there. And then we're also going, going to be doing the Casa Pita y Grande. I probably didn't say that right. I usually leave that up to Pedro. But that area is just, just east of Penel Avenue, and it's off of West Viola Street, just north of there. So that's the other subdivision we're working on. And we're also, we also have in the process the CG Maricopa Highway. And of course, you did approve the design of that project, and it is under design right now. However, it's probably not going to go out to bid and be ready to move forward until next fiscal year. We have some right-of-way acquisition we have to go through, so we've got to fix, fix that piece before we're able to go to final design and then put that out to bid for construction.
Vel Vista, okay, it'd be just the Maricopa Highway you're looking at here.
Yes, it's just that section of Maricopa Highway from Russell Road over to Bianco. And that's going to be most likely a slurry seal, micro seal, something like that. And then we're doing some pavement improvements and some additional turn lanes there at the Vel Vista intersection to improve the safety. That's really what drove that project. Then we're also doing Main Avenue, West Main Avenue, and Florence Street. And a piece that is left off of there, we did add late to this project Third Street, which is just west of, of Florence Street. That was the section of pavement that was left out of our, our former pavement improvement projects, and we did that for a reason. That site had been identified as a potential site for the splash pad at one point. So we didn't want to do any improvements in there in case we did move forward with that development. Not having that development move forward there and actually moving forward where it did very successfully, we're now going to be doing that section of pavement as part of this program.
You know, one of the things that's really hard to imagine, but that's true, is south, south Florence at Ash Street South is the same road as Penel Avenue. Very same road.
Yeah, if you line them up, that's exactly right. And then the last road on our program this year is Hacienda. Of course, we, we budget $1.5 million for our PM-10 response, and we try to get one mile of road taken care of. Hacienda is a very heavily traveled road that runs from Selma Highway up to Early Road. So we'll be doing a double chip seal there. And again, all of, all of these projects are in, somewhere in the process. Our pavement maintenance is out to bid right now. We'll be getting those bids back. I forgot my sheet. Do you know when?
So this will pave all the way to Selma Highway, then?
Yes, that'll take care of Selma. We had actually, we're going to be moving forward with that project quite a few years back when, when Selma Highway was going to be the interchange, and they were going to have to create that bypass around that interchange. So we kind of put that off. Now we've reprogrammed that, and, and it has come up, so. So that's our pavement management system and the program that we've developed for this year. And we're really hoping that next year, we're able to put together what we consider a very solid five-year plan to share with both council as well as the community and really talk about how we get to those points. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, I do have one just question for you. How, are any of these specifically HIRF money? Some of this HIRF funds that we, we have?
So we currently use HIRF dollars and half-cent sales tax. I don't have the specific breakdown of where it falls, but our pavement maintenance program is, I believe, 100 percent HIRF.
Okay. Which is our highway user funds, for those who don't know what HIRF stands for, sorry. So those are their sales tax dollars we get back from the state?
For gasoline tax.
Gasoline tax, correct. Which we weren't getting before.
We're getting more than.
Which is, we're getting more now, that's why we can do.
You say now that you're, now that you're the mayor, is that?
You're the one bringing electric cars.
Well, you know, Kevin, thanks for the presentation. It's always interesting as you bring up the, the method to the madness because so many times we get people that ask, why not my neighborhood? And so this is always educational. Every year, you bring it up, and every year, we learn something new. So it, there's definitely strategy on how we choose to, you know, take care of the streets. I, my question is, I know, and I'm not sure how this fits in, but when we purchase that piece of equipment where we can do some small projects, how does that fit in? What, what equipment was it again? But I know we, we did it because we did, you know, Dry Lake and Second Street, some of the smaller projects. So how does that fit into your schedule? Are you able to do things in addition to this, this budgeted amount?
Yeah, so, so this, this is our pavement maintenance program, and it is totally separate than our pavement maintenance within the, the budget. So we have a, a line item in our budget that covers maintenance operations. And we do that within our operating. that within our operating budget. So we look and we go through the year and we respond to whatever happens that year. And then as we get closer to that June 30th date, we start to program some of those projects, like we did Dry Lake and I think First Street and, and several others in, in the area. And we've done that again for this year. We have our wish list. We've identified some of those. And actually, a lot of those are, are driven by, by our residents calling in and having those conversations and we go out there and we go, "Yeah, we need to do something."
Right, okay.
But it's not part of a big program.
Okay.
And a lot of that effort is in our downtown area.
Mm-hmm.
Because those are the areas where we're going to have to make some major drainage improvements in the future in that area. So the last thing I want to do is rebuild all the roads down there and then have to tear them up. So again, that's, uh, that's one of those things that if, if development picks up and we start to see an infuse of, of construction, sales tax and those types of things where we can start to generate those fund balances and, and somebody sends that money my way, we can start to do some of those bigger projects and get those programmed.
So those projects?
Did that answer your question?
What, um, what type of equipment is it? Can you clarify? And it, does it take care of the slurry or the chip seal? What, what does it take care of?
So we have two pieces of equipment that we take advantage of. One is our zipper and that's a small mill machine where we're actually able to grind down the asphalt and the subgrade and kind of reconstitute it, recompact it, and then we, we remove what's left and then we repave. And then we use our paver. We have a 12-foot paver that we're able to use and do that asphalt paving. We have to be very careful because there's only so much of those types of projects that we can do before we start to violate state statute. There are laws out there that govern how much work we can do in-house versus going out to a contractor. So we, there's a fine line there and we try to bump up to the maximum as, as often as possible. Again, it really comes down to what did we have to respond to this year and how much extra money do we have?
Okay, thank you.
That, that was pretty much I wanted to bring up about our equipment, that we do our small projects and also.
What are we doing with our bike paths, right?
Yep. And also promote our See Click Fix app, Kevin, which is a good way, right, to get your, your potholes taken care of and any issues on your streets, so.
The equestrian pass, you're going to need barrels for the horse diapers.
It's bigger than a doggy one.
Kevin, thank you for the information. I have one question regarding the open houses, because I know it's disappointing when the, the community demands to know, but then they don't show up. Is there an opportunity for us to videotape those and have them available online so folks that are not there have the opportunity to, you know, to hear what, what's going on?
I think it's a great opportunity. We could, uh, we could do one of those, uh, um, videos with our new PIO and, and put something together and get that out on our website and, and that might generate some more interest.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea because then it supports the work that you guys are already doing. Okay.
I give them the thumbs up if we can do that.
Bob?
Uh, just a comment. I want to thank all three of you for the condition and the maintenance of our, of our public streets. I often drive in other communities in the immediate area, sometimes further out, and there are times I'm shocked to see neighborhoods that have no curb and gutter, they have what's left of what was once asphalt, and I don't see that in Casa Grande. So my, my thanks to you for that. And I also, I, I read it in a report and I'm not sure if it was from you, Kevin, but it was, uh, in the area PCI grades or classifications of our neighboring communities. And, and I don't know if there were any that, that were in the, in the mid to low 70s. They, it seemed like we were always a couple steps ahead of everybody, so thank you for, for the job you're doing at shows.
Well, you know, I have to give credit to Chris Lockson and Pedro Adon. You know, them and their team in our streets department really do a great job. They, they are passionate about what they do, they care about the roads and they are not afraid to walk into my office and say, "Here's what we need to do." And boy, we better do it, so.
Good job.
Keep doing it.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I didn't know if we had any comments from the ex-public works director. He's in the peanut gallery.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys do a great job.
Next item on the agenda is now, the AARP Literary, Literacy Third Grade Reading Pilot Is there somebody from the group? Oh, Ms. Jackson.
Also known as Judy. Good evening, everyone. We are very honored to be here tonight to talk to you about our third grade reading program that we'll be presenting to you information about. Let me just remind you that we are a chief Pinell. We are a formal project of the Pinell Alliance for Economic Growth. We are focused on improving the Pinell County workforce a couple of ways, by improving educational achievement and improving post-secondary attainment. So those are kind of the two big goals that we're focusing on making improvement so that we will have that better workforce ready for all our new employers that are coming into the region. So I'm going to just introduce the three presenters for the presentation that we have tonight, and I will ask them to stand as I read their name. Jerry Stably, many of you may know, is a member of A Chief Pinell, and he's really been our motivation for this program and our leader for the Experience Core Program. Jerry volunteered as a tutor for the Phoenix program for several years and is a strong believer in its value and success. He's worked very hard to get us here tonight and he will be our lead presenter this evening, so. Peggy Goldberg is the AARP Foundation Experience Core Volunteer and Affiliate Advisor. She's responsible for a portfolio of established Experience Core programs in California, Arizona and Oregon, and the newest program in greater Atlanta. She's responsible for new program startup. She provides technical assistance, ensures programs are meeting AARP Experience Core program standards and connects them with AARP resources. Thank you, Peggy. Rebecca Bond was the Project Director for the City of Tempe AARP Foundation Experience Core Program for seven years. After retiring in May in 2019, she became the Organizational Development Consultant with the National AARP Foundation Experience Core Program and provides technical assistance and implementation support for new and existing Experience Core programs. Thank you. So I will turn the program over now to Jerry.
Thank you, Judy. It is a great pleasure to be with you this evening to talk about this program. As, as Judy mentioned, this is a program that I volunteered for, for three years in Phoenix. And that entire time I was thinking, "Why can't we, why can't we have this program here in Casa Grande so I can, so I can shorten my commute to, to go ahead and do it?" So. And Judy touched on a little bit of what the, what the initiative is. We are a project of, of A Chief Pinell, and A Chief Pinell is a grassroots organization and we are dedicated to improving educational attainment. And the question arises, why, why focus on reading? And the answer to that is, and we've learned this from one of the members of our group, who's, who was a former teacher and now is administrator with the, with the school district, and, and what she tells us is that first children learn to read, then they read to learn. And being able to read by the end of third grade is the, is the crucial milestone in a child's future success. So the children who cannot read by the end of third grade are four times more likely to leave school without a diploma and more prone to engage in behavior such as truancy and aggression. So why does Casa Grande need this, this program? Well, we believe, as a group, we believe that we have a very bright economic future, but there's a nip to that. We have to be able to provide workers for the new companies, the new, new employers that we have coming into town. You know them, you know them better than I do. Lucid, Atessa, Nicola and, and others as well. And, and many of these will be offering very good paying jobs, but the good paying jobs of the future are ones that will require reading and analytical skills, even for the industrial jobs. One of my stories that I tell, I grew up in a town that has a Harley-Davidson plant. And in that plant, they, they, of course, paint those fancy paint jobs on those gas tanks. Those are not done by people, those are done by machines. They take the raw gas tank, put it on a, put it on a stand, hit a button and the machine paints that, the machine paints that tank. So that's really just a, an example of the kinds of things that are being done by machines in, in manufacturing plants. So, so even in manufacturing plants, the, the people who are working there, often instead of doing the, the physical labor, they're going to be managing the machines, they're going to be repairing the machines, programming the machines, adjusting the machines. So they're going to have to go, have a good background in reading and analytical skills in order to do that. The Arizona Progress Meter for third grade reading is, is a statewide, a statewide progress meter, and, and we have a goal for the state, and that, that goal is 72% reading at grade level. So again, the third graders who can read at grade level. In the state currently, we're at 44%. Pinell County's at 38% and Casa Grande is at 29%. And remember that, that third grade reading is that crucial marker for a child's success in the future. So how do we address this program? We propose to bring to Casa Grande the AARP Experience Core Reading Literacy Program. And that program places adult volunteers, 50 years and better, into elementary school classrooms, people like me. And people like me provide then one-on-one tutoring and encouragement and, and helping the, helping the students learn how to read, also, also helping them feel better about themselves as well. It's, a lot of these children don't get the one-on-one attention that, that, that all of our children had when they grew up. And, and, and I, and I've seen it happen, happen time and time again, they just blossom. When somebody's paying attention to them, they, they blossom, literally, they blossom. So the program is designed to improve fluency. And fluency is basically the ability to read text accurately and quickly. And they found that once somebody can read it accurately and quickly, then comprehension quickly follows that. But first, you have to be able to read it accurately and quickly. There have been multiple studies about the benefits of, of this, of this program done by Johns Hopkins University, Washington University, which is in Missouri, showing the effectiveness of the program. You can see the stats there, 62% improved one half year or more in grade reading level, improved attendance, 92% of the teachers believe that this has had a very positive impact on their students. Tempe and Phoenix, Tempe and Phoenix are the two cities in Arizona that have the program at this point in time. There are 22 programs across the country, two in Arizona, so Tempe and Phoenix. When the program comes here, then we would be number three. Not Tucson, but Casa Grande. There's also health and social benefits for volunteers. There's increased sense of purpose for, for the, the people that volunteer. One of the things that, that I enjoy, the, the women that I volunteered with in the school that I was at, we get together once a month and we have lunch together. And so there's that, the kind of social aspect of this that's very, very important for people who are, again, who are 50, 50 and better. The studies also show that the, that there's a halted or reversed decline in brain volume, which I'm all for keeping brain volume. And as I mentioned, the, the social impacts for, for the seniors. Let me turn it now over to Peggy, who's going to talk to us a little bit about the Tempe and Phoenix experiences.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I appreciate the time. Absolutely, the program has been operating in Tempe and Phoenix. Tempe had the program started 14 years ago and it's been operating in Phoenix for six years. And they're both hosted by the cities. So within Tempe, it was a Community Services Department and now it's in the Human Services Department. And then in the city of Phoenix, it's through the City Manager's Office. And the city provides that, that great base of operations and the additional in-kind support that cities can provide. In addition then, to, in order to fund the program, then both of those communities then applied for tribal grants, they also applied through local business community to receive funding for, you know, other expenses, volunteer recognition, that sort of thing. It, it really, the program is really dependent upon having a staff position, you know, to manage the program. The great thing about having it within a city is that there's that great partnership that happens between the city and the school district naturally, and so there's that credibility factor and that really makes a, a huge difference. The partnership, the community partnerships are really critical to ensuring that the program is successful. And that has happened in both, in, in all of the organizations across the country, but primarily in Phoenix where in Tempe, where I'm thinking about city-hosted, that really makes a huge difference. They're able to really kind of organize and really gather the, the support that they need for the program. In terms of the stakeholders, you know, while Jerry had mentioned, you know, adults 50 and older, your residents that are 50 and better, they are, they become advocates for education, they become more civically engaged in the community. So it's a very, you know, that's a win-win-win all the way around. Let me talk a little bit about outcomes. Jerry had, had spoken a little bit about it. I'm going to just give you a little bit about what has happened in Tempe and Phoenix. Tempe specifically, I'll just, I'll grab those statistics because they're really pretty amazing. So looking at, over a four-year period, the average growth for students, 99% of the students that were worked with improved in their fluency and accuracy. That's amazing. 63% of them received, got to grade level benchmark, which is really, really difficult to move that, move that needle, and that's really critical. And then 75% of, of got, got to grade level benchmark in accuracy. So those are really pretty outstanding statistics and, and ones that we know we can duplicate in Casa Grande for sure. The other part of it is the volunteers. We know that the volunteers, 100% of the volunteers in Phoenix and Tempe have said that it really increased that, their sense of purpose. You know, they, they felt like they were giving back to their community and that made a huge difference for them. And 96% of them said it really increased their kind of physical ability, mental ability, their learning, their engage, their, you know, and it also decreases social isolation for folks that may, you know, may not be out in the community. So this is a way to, for them to kind of connect with other folks. And then nationally, so that's what happens locally. What happens, why AARP Foundation is so invested in this is that, is they know that preventing poverty, preventing, it starts at this young age. And so they are really invested in making sure that our members are really part of the solution. And so the foundation is really invested in, in Experience Core. And what the foundation brings to the community is that we provide a certified reading specialist, a trainer that comes and we provide that to you, all the training, equip manuals, materials, all of that is provided. The students receive books and those are provided and printed by AARP and they're provided to the students. We also have opportunities for pass-through funding through different grants that we may be applying for, so there's that opportunity as well. And then we provide technical assistance, so we don't, you kind of sign you up and say, "You're on your own." We're there every step of the way, and that's Rebecca and myself, who are instrumental in making sure that everything is running smoothly. We're there with you the entire way. We have a national conference that we will have two, two folks from the community come and attend. We provide the housing and, and all of that for that national conference. And then we also have a, what we call a boot, startup boot camp, and that will be held in Tempe, and that's annually, and that's to help the program get launched. So we're bringing a lot of resources to you because we want to make sure that it, it's started up successfully and that it also will be, you know, a long-term project. We don't want to invest in something that's going to kind of just be there for a year or so. We, we're looking at a long-term and we're looking at growth. So we're excited to be here.
Great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
So what we're looking at is creating what we call rural model for this program. I had mentioned to you before that there are twenty-two places across the United States that have this program. The smallest one is a metroplex of a hundred and seventy-five thousand people. And so we, we want to create a model that can be used in places that are rural yet urbanizing, like our area, or, or places that will remain rural. And so there's a couple of things that we're going to need to do in order to make that successful, so I'll, I'll touch on a couple of those as, as we go along. But number one, the Casa Grande, in this case, would be a pilot program for, for the rest of the project. Our goal is to offer this program to school districts across the county. But in Casa Grande, because of the, the strength of the community, we feel, and the school district, that we can come in, create a pilot program, we can address the challenges that we have, creating, creating this brand-new rural model, and establish a foundation for, for excellence as, as we, as we move forward. Our proposed timeline is to start this, this next coming, next coming school year, so basically in September of 2020, and to have a two-year pilot program, then in our third year to be able to offer it to schools then outside of, outside of Casa Grande. And one of the things we're bringing to you tonight is, is a request, and the request is that the city of Casa Grande serve as the host for the program, and, and also we're before you to ask, of course, for financial contribution. But the host then provides the three O's, the organization, offices, and oversight for the employees. And we're looking, and we'll talk more about that as far as number of employees. The AARP, as Peggy mentioned, looks for a very stable environment, a very stable group to host the program, and, and they, of course, are very impressed with, with Casa Grande, the meetings that we've had with, with staff and the mayor, and are, are very anxious to have the city of Casa Grande to be able to host the program. We had shown some other potential hosts there in, in this slide. How would the program be staffed? We're looking at approximately a hundred and twenty-eight students to start with. We thought it would probably be less, but, but the ladies from AARP convinced us that we need to think bigger, so we're thinking bigger. And we're looking at thirty-two tutors, so each tutor would have four students they're working with. We're looking for a daddy, data entry person, and that would be a full-time job that, that would be, that would be a Vista, a Vista employee, thank you. And a program coordinator, who would be three-quarters time, so it would be thirty hours, and that would be one person. So there'd be two staff people that we would have for this, for this pilot program. And because we are looking at, at creating basically a new model, what we're calling a rural model, we're looking at a different way of managing it. We're looking at three, what I call the three-legged stool here of management, where we have the host doing the vast majority, of course, of the work, but the school district being very involved, and also Achieve Panal being very involved in, in the program. And let me elaborate a little bit on that. The, the joint responsibilities of the committee, we would set direction for the program, disperse funds, and provide general guidance to the, the, the program coordinator. Individually, the host, again, would have the three O's, the organization, offices, and oversight, and of course, the financial support we'll be asking for. The school district would, in the future, would be able to build tutor training, would also support the, the program, and that's one of the things that we want to make sure that as we offer this program to other school districts, that they, that they always have skin in the game. It can't be something they say, you know, choose us, choose us, we don't have any money, but choose us anyway. It's got to be something that they're, they're contributing as well. They, the school district would provide test data for, for the program, and also work with the, with our program, our project manager, to select those students that would be, that would become part of the program. And it's really a very kind of strict criterion that they're looking at, it's those kids that are really just on the cusp of being able to learn. And if by third grade they're not able to learn, then they often fall back and never really catch up with their, with their compatriots. Achieve Panal would, would still be, as I mentioned before, be very involved. Fundraising is going to be a major part of our effort, managing the five oh one C three, and outreach to the community, to let people know what's going on, and hopefully to help us court people who will be able to provide funding. Peggy, did you, did you want to come back and talk about this at all? Did you, did you cover it before? Okay.
One thing I did want to mention, and I didn't mention about the type of support, is that this AARP state office is a very big supporter and will be very helpful with recruitment and getting the word out, sending out information to all AARP members throughout, you know, this, this area, throughout Panal. So I, I think that's going to be, I, I don't really feel like recruitment is going to be difficult at all. So that's, and then in terms of support, where we have the two communities that have the program, and they're doing such a great job with it, and we've got Rebecca's amazing expertise, we are there, and, and like I said, we are there with you every step of the way. We'll arrange regular meetings, we'll be coming and meeting with you, we'll encourage your folks to come down and see how things are operating, you know, in Phoenix and Tempe. So for the first year, there'll be a lot of that, you know, back and forth, and regular calls, regular meetings, that sort of thing.
So program costs, we've, we have taken a very sharp pencil to this program, and we believe that we would like to hire, again, a program coordinator, who would work three-quarters time, would work all year for a salary of, of a little bit more than thirty-one thousand dollars. And then the administrative board, support would again be provided by a Vista employee, and our contribution to that would be around four thousand dollars, a total of eight thousand dollars for that. We would have other costs, there would be the launch costs, and there would also be volunteer support, to make sure that, that the, the volunteers feel like they're, they're, they're being, being, that they're being appreciated. And also about three thousand dollars for fingerprinting. So the total cost is a little bit shy of fifty thousand dollars, and again, this is our, this is our first-year cost. So possibly, as I mentioned, we're looking at a new rural model here, which will, which will mean that we'll have to be doing some significant fundraising. This is a partial list of fundraisers, we have actually a list of over sixty that we are right now looking at to try to, to gather funds from. Timeline, Judy talked about, Judy and Peggy both talked about this. We're looking to get our application in before, before, in, within the next month, and that AARP can hopefully approve it and ask us to participate within a short amount of time. We would get the program coordinator on board in March, so it's very important that we have funding early on here to be able to support that salary. In spring, we do the boot camp that Peggy talked about, and volunteer training over the summer, and the program begins then in September. Volunteers, as, as Peggy mentioned, the Mayor's Reading Club, we feel would be a really good place to start, to look for volunteers to help us with that program, considering there's eighty people that are involved with that. And that's our presentation. Thank you very much for your time today. Do you have any questions?
I have a few. So a couple things about the volunteer, and, and you know, recruitment is really important, but retention is as well. And you had mentioned, I think it said four hours, that, a week that they would be asked to participate. The question regarding that, and I understand there's twenty-five hours of training and, you know, all that that goes with it, if we start at the beginning of the school year, is, does that mean that we would not be able to use some of our winter visitors for, for this program? I mean, how, you know, we really want them to stick around and, and retain them throughout the school year, but we all know that we have such a great, you know, group of winter visitors. So how can we incorporate them to help make this successful?
That is an excellent question, it's one of the things that we've talked about. And the program typically, when school starts, the first month or so, they're, they're really collecting information. The, the teachers are finding out what, what the strengths of their students are, they're, they're doing some initial testing, they're seeing how, how, what students have forgotten over the summer, and, and finding out where they are. And so typically, the programs will start towards the end of September and October, and, and a lot of our winter visitors are arriving earlier and earlier, so we think there will be an opportunity for our winter, winter visitors. And also, the program starts typically a month before the, before the, the school term actually ends, because they get involved in a lot of testing towards the end of last month, and so, so typically, they're done before that. So that, it, it's going to be pretty close to the timeframe that we have our, our winter guests with us.
Yeah, and that was my concern, because if we do the summer training, many of them wouldn't be here. So that's why I brought that up.
Yes, and they're very flexible about training as well, and so they'll, they'll work with our schedules.
Okay. And then, just to reiterate, there's not a cost to the volunteers, because we take care of the, the background, the fingerprinting, and those kind of things. They don't have to pay for any part of the training?
That's correct, they, they don't have to pay anything.
Okay. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Mr. Powell.
I think it's an excellent program to set goals, and say we want third graders to read by, by third, or third graders to be able to read. And, and I never, ever heard that that was supposed to be the level. I'm lucky I've got a granddaughter that every time I buy a book, she gets one. She follows me there, and she picks out one, and, and I, I get to have more time in her book than I do in mine usually, but as I say, I think it's really important that you set goals, and you say by third grade, we want them able to read, and if there's a group or a percentage that's not, what do you do with them? Do you just give them special attention, or try to, the people would work with them to help bring them up, up to speed, or?
There are some children that, that do need special education, and so there, there are programs set up to help them. It's, it's those, those kids that don't need special education, but yet are, have the, certainly the, the ability to learn how to read, but just haven't gotten there yet. And sometimes, sometimes kids lag a little bit, sometimes they come from households where they're the only person in the household that speaks English, or, or sometimes their parents are very busy working two or three jobs and just don't have the time to spend with them, or have, have a grandfather that can help them read too. So, so some of them don't have those, those benefits, and, and those are the kids that we're looking at, those kids that are just about on the cusp.
Well, the, well, at some point, third grade, I think, is a really good point, to want everybody to be able to read, and to reach that goal's got to give you a lot of satisfaction as a superintendent and, and all the people involved with it, getting the kids at that spot. Would there be like a fifth grade math, or if, if this works so well, will you set a, a deal for math later on, where, I mean, you take, you take reading and math, those two are probably the two most important to be successful, although there's a number of others that would come up, so.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for listening to this presentation today, and I just have to say that our district is so pleased to partner with these amazing folks, and eventually with AARP. While this organization is specifically focused on literacy, and it's very focused on a particular set of students, I can assure you that the district, our district, is doing a lot to intervene with students and make sure that they're learning their skills in reading and in math that they need. Things have changed over time, I know you weren't able to make it to this state of the district, but we've put a lot of different pieces into place in order to make sure that students are not only learning their facts, but they're learning the concepts behind the facts. And so that when they go on to middle school and high school, they have a firmer grasp of math. But our big focus this year, last year, next year, the following year, is going to be on literacy, because our students need to be able to read in order to do math, in order to understand conceptually. And so while we're still focused on and working on math, the big emphasis is on literacy.
I think reading's the key, as it says to start with, you know, that you learn to read, and then you read to learn, and, and that opens up so many doors that way, but, you know, I've gone to several town halls, and, and heard different things, and always was ashamed that Arizona was like forty-ninth, or forty-eighth, or forty-seventh in the nation with education. And I've always felt, I even served as a board member on high school board for a while, trying to, to bring things up so that we were doing better than, than what's been experienced, but it, it just, it seems like we have trouble getting out of there. Now, something like you're talking about right now is a darn good way to start, to try to get, get out of that quagmire and, and be able to develop students that, that can progress successfully.
I have to say I agree. The relationships that are built between students and adults, and having so many more adults to be able to help, is really going to provide that extra oomph that our kids need in order to move to that next level.
Absolutely. Matt?
I want to first thank the Achieve Panal group, and especially recovering Mayor Jackson and his lovely wife. I know we're a big instrument along with other people in getting that started, but, but identified how important it is, and I'm proud to say that, as Mr. Staveley pointed out, it's not Tucson next, it's Casa Grande next, getting this program. And as one of our strategic plan points from the, the city standpoint was education, you know, because even though we're not the school board, the first question we get whenever a big company, small company, anyone comes to town is, and what's your tax rate, what's your, what's your education system like? And for us to partner with you guys, and, and I know it's been a goal of your guys' is too, from the school side, and Achieve Panal's bringing that all together, so I'm really proud that we can do that, because it's so important for us, and as someone who's married to an English major teacher, I can attest to all these things that you've been saying tonight. And then it really hit home was the reading and analytical skills, which I don't want to belabor, but no matter what job you have, if it's high-tech job, or, or, you know, a service job, any sort of job, reading and analytical skills are the basis for any employment, whatever, if you want to go to college or not. So I'm glad to see we're focusing on that, and just thank you guys very much for bringing this to us, and hopefully we can make this work, and I know we will, and we will get our kids in the right direction.
Lisa.
On that, you know, having three children of my own, and I remember the challenges, you know, getting them to that level, and the importance, and, you know, I saw so many children struggle, including my own. And so, you know, like Dr. Gonzalez said, I know, I went to the state of, your, your address, and it's amazing what it's doing, outside of just, you know, teaching, there, there's so much that's going on in the district. So this is a piece that just enhances what you're doing and provides more volunteers in the classroom. But, you know, again, you know, Chief Panal, I really, I mean, you guys are volunteers, you're retired. So much for, so much for retiring, but it doesn't surprise me, you know, the people that are behind this. And so, you know, it's such a critical piece, and, and like Councilmember Herman said, you know, when we put in education in our strategic plan, all of us weren't quite sure. There was a lot of pushback, hesitation, how, why should the city do this? But this is why. You know, we wanted to make sure that we're being held accountable as a city on, in improving, you know, education in our community. So I'm so happy to see the collaborations, I'm happy that our staff is open to working with education institutions. So I, you know, I'm just, I'm just pleased, you know, again, with, with you guys being open to, to working with them, and the, the, just the community. I'm an AARP member, so I'll be sure that I sign up, so, to help out, but, um, yeah, I agree, I think you're, you're not going to have any problem. I really hope the, the students, the hundred and twenty-eight, was it, students that you pick are pretty diverse in the different schools, and I'm really hoping that we can reach out to diverse volunteers, you know, to make sure that we're, you know, getting the Spanish-speaking, that it might be a little easier for them with a Spanish-speaking volunteer. So I, I really hope to see that diversification when you do choose, you know, those students. But, but again, thank you, and thank you to AARP for your support, and, and for Achieve Panal for bringing this. I'm excited about it.
Okay, just my closing comments, you know where I stand on this issue, I'm a huge supporter, I've been a supporter since the whole idea first was, you know, put, put together, and, and all the work that, you know, everyone over here and Jerry has done to get this up to where it's at, and the other things that you're working on as well, the Career Topias, and all the other things that, that Achieve Panal is working on, you know, nobody has any idea of all the time and the effort that's put into this behind the scenes, and really, you know, driven by Judy and Bob, and they're really the driving force in this. And Evelyn too, Evelyn Kusuga, just give her some credit, I know she's not here. But it's really been good to see and the cooperation between the school systems. I was told just the other day that Vista Grande now is a B-level high school, so huge, huge kudos there. This isn't happening overnight, this is a long slug through the mud. This is a long slug through the mud to make some serious changes. And I think we're headed in the right direction. We've been working really hard the last four or five years. And it's, and it's now, I think, we're going to start to see hopefully some of the fruits of that labor. So thank you to everybody who's involved in this and really bless you for what you're doing. So thank you.
We like you guys.
We really can't thank Jerry enough. Jerry has brought tremendous passion here and has worked really hard with us to get this up and running. But I so appreciate your comments because one of the things about Casa Grande that we're really rich in, we may, we may lack resources in lots of things, but what we're rich in is caring people. And so we really need to tap that resource because we have things for them to do. We have lots of things for them to do. And we're going to, we're going to match them up enthusiastically for the benefit of our kids. And I really think we're going to see benefit from this because guess what? We need to hurry. We really need to hurry it up. And Dr. Gonzalez needs all the support she can get with the kids that we're working with and the results that we need to get so that we can have that strong workforce that we all need. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. All right. Item number three on our study session then is the, Fernando here to do that presentation. It's on our proposed amendments to the Donovan Kramer Industrial Park CCNRs, which is basically are the HOA out of the airport.
Awesome. Good evening, Mayor and council. And we're happy to present these revisions, these recommendations on the airport industrial park, because of restrictions. Before I begin, I'd like to do a quick overview, this is working, there we go, a quick overview on a couple of the items that I'll be presenting on today. So first, we'll focus on the purpose of us doing these revisions, the involvement, the different property owners that were part of this process, discrepancies that we identified and the CCNRs, combinations that we did throughout the different paragraphs, changes, updates, and some questions at the end. So the purpose of us doing these recommendations and revisions was because we identified quite a few of discrepancies throughout the different paragraphs. And I'll give some examples later on. We want to make this less restrictive to be able to spare economic development in the airport industrial park. For the last couple of months, we've had the opportunity to present a lot of projects to the Arizona Commerce Authority, the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. Want to make sure that the airport industrial park is also equipped with good CCNRs that could cater to these future projects, potential projects. And also, we wanted to get some feedback from the property owners as well. For the last couple of months, we've done different efforts in BRNE, whether it's a home builder roundtable event, our next one, which is the real estate professional event. And this is a form of BRNE and pretty much getting a good gauge of how the property owners are working with the CCNRs. Now, for involvement, we have city staff, public works, planning and zoning, city manager's office, and the economic development department. And a couple of the folks that were definitely key players throughout this process were Mr. Fitzgivens, Mr. Amick, Mr. Aiken, and Mr. Dave Goss, who's present today. So throughout this process, we probably met around six different times. And we had one public meeting at the airport industrial park where we presented these recommendations. Now, before I get into the specific CCNRs, after all of our meetings, we had quite a few meetings, the property owners and the city staff, we came up with the best option that we wanted to present. We all agreed on the different CCNRs that I'm about to present. And we think that this would be the best route for the airport industrial park as well. Now, I'll talk a little bit about the discrepancies that we identified. So throughout the 2003 version, we identified the amendments two, three, seven, twelve, sixteen, twenty-two, and twenty-three as just blank statements. So you had your number one all the way to number thirty-two, and these were just left blank. So it left a lot of things to question. So we wanted to clarify that. We did revisit the 1993 version. And we came to the conclusion that yes, the intent was to delete these. Now, in order to represent these better on the CCNRs now, we're going to include the language as reserved. So for example, I included right there on paragraph number one and four, we see that there's blanks for number two and three. Moving forward, all the different blanks that are throughout those thirty-two different paragraphs are going to stay reserved. So for the purposes of this presentation, we're going to be skipping over two, three, seven, twelve, sixteen, twenty-two, and twenty-three because we came to the conclusion that intent was to delete, we're marking them as reserved. Any questions? So the next item is combinations for CCNR number nine. We thought that it would be a good idea to include paragraph number ten and twenty-five because it was relating towards the same topic. For these two paragraphs as well, we've deemed them as reserved as well. So we're going to be skipping over those. Since we have a lot of items throughout this presentation, the paragraphs that did not change at all, we're not going to be covering them. Those are going to be staying the same as the 1993 version and the 2003 version. So this is an example of the CCNR number two that was blank in the 2003 version, but was present on the 1993 version. You can see the previous version, the changes that we did. And now it's going to be stated as reserved. Okay, so our first one, for paragraph number four, the original one, said that no fueling facilities for aircraft shall be allowed. They included verbiage that we included for this final version is that no commercial fueling facilities for aircraft shall be allowed. So any verbiage that we see that's highlighted as blue is the language that we included. Red is going to be the deletions that we had. So I'll just be focusing additions and the deletions. And if you have any questions, we're happy to answer that as well.
Why would, you have a fueling system on the airport and that's part of the revenue base. Why would there be any commercial fueling other than yours on the airport grounds?
We're trying to prevent that for future, future projects, the airport industrial park. We decided to include that language for that case. So for that future property owner at the airport industrial park, this is already set on the CCNRs.
Is that regarding a one property or is that regarding the airport?
That's regarding the industrial park.
I hate to pick apart the very first one, but does that mean a private fueling facility would be allowed? Could somebody put a tank at their hangar and keep it full and?
For this one, I believe that for certain cases, it would be applicable, if it's only for their own use, whether it's part of their operations.
That would be allowed?
Yes, if it's only for their own operation, commercial use, not selling to other property owners.
Okay.
Because it is an airport industrial park, some of the times, those potential projects that would go into an industrial park like this one would have to have their own fueling capabilities.
And if I could, just to make sure everyone understands, you know, when we talk about it, because it's easy to get the airport confused with the airport industrial park. So they couldn't put it in like a hangar that's out at our airport, like inside the fence, because that's not subject to the airport industrial park CCNRs. This is the industrial park only when we talk about all of these CCNRs.
Thank you.
And I will be having support from public works and planning and zoning for some of these questions as well, so. Okay, we'll go into the next one. For this one, no commercial storage of aircraft shall be allowed except in lots fifty-nine. And number ten, for this one, basically, we took out lot number twenty, lot number fifty-two because that's the north operations center. This paragraph would not apply to the not building anymore. So we just deleted that lot for this paragraph. So we're going to go into CCNR number six. For this one, the added verbiage, the blue section, aircraft shall be, sorry. This one, aircraft shall be paved using minimum city standards. This was included in order to take out the next verbiage because what we're trying to do is avoid extra verbiage throughout the CCNRs, make it more efficient, make it more effective. So for a lot of these, we're going to be referencing to the city code that they're already going to be following as they develop their projects in those lots, so. Now, for the last section, we don't follow FAA standards when we are building, so we took out that verbiage as well. And that's the last red deleted portion on CCNR number six. Any questions on that one? Now, we're going to skip to number eight. That first section was deleted to not burden the property owners in cost. There is the next recommendation on the next slide. So the purple version right there was replaced by new verbiage where Mr. Fitzgivens was working on it, the property owners and the city staff as well. So the main theme for this CCNR is that the cost for arbitrators was reduced because the arbitration association was deleted. So now, you don't need to go to that association. It can be done by the property owners itself, reducing that cost and making it a little bit more flexible for them if there would be any issues in regards to this CCNR. Okay, now this one, we worked on this one quite a bit. The blue section is referencing the purpose to safeguard the property owners into reasonable maintenance costs. Before, on the old version, the CCNR was based on a pro-rata, which has now been deleted. And now, what we're focusing on is that every lot in the airport industrial park is going to be paying for access and not the pro-rata cost. So if there's a property owner in the airport industrial park that has access to a taxiway, they're going to be paying for their access and not what's in front of their lot line. So this would make it fair to the different property owners since everybody's only paying for that access. Does that make sense?
How does that affect the city? Because the city's the major property owner out there, is it not?
At the present time, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city is an owner of several of the lots in phase three of the airport industrial park. Phases one and two have been sold off to private users primarily. Our intention in phase three is to, in fact, sell those to private businesses as well. So there will, while we do have some level of ownership today, there will be a time that we hope that this will be owned by private investment, by the private developer.
But currently, we would be, would the city be assessed for this cost? Okay.
Yeah, and so, and so, Mr. Mayor, I believe the question that Councilman Huddleston is asking is would we have to pay of a taxiway that's built on property that, or around property that we still own? And the answer is yes. Typically, what will transpire is that if the taxiway is being constructed, if there's capital costs that we would, in fact, incur, we would obviously establish the basis for that property when we sold it with those improvements being made to them at that time.
Currently, Larry, there are no taxiways built, so there's no, there are no expenses today. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go into the next one, paragraph number fifteen. So this one, basically, we modified it to say the following. All landscape improvements shall at minimum comply with the city's code requirements. So we're making it easier for them. They're already seeing this language. There's no need to be redundant throughout the CCNRs again, so. Any questions on these ones? Okay, now this next one, the purpose for this one was to make it less restrictive and allow equipment storage at the airport industrial park. Currently, there's property owners that are out of compliance and would not be following the current CCNRs. This will allow for different opportunities for new property owners to, yes, have that storage outside, and it would still be reviewed by the design review committee as well, which is reference on the new changes. Any questions on this one? Okay, for number twenty-one, we changed the election time. So originally, it said that elections for the design review committee would be done annually on the first Monday of November. We've changed that now to every four years in order to save time and money and also make sure that, you know, it's not being done every single year. Whatever group is usually at the design review committee, it's very consistent and it's very informed of what the rest of the property owners are experiencing there. So it's definitely a great voice. We thought that every four years would make the most sense. Now, for the rest of the parts, there's no engineering criteria within the CCNRs, so we just took out that privilege.
So when it says 2019, then does that mean they're going to have an election this December?
We're probably going to be modifying that to 2020. This process has been taking quite a few months, so we were expecting it to be done by 2019. It's probably going to start 2020.
Just checking.
Thank you. Okay, any questions for that one? Now, we're going to go into number twenty-six. We included the verbiage for this one, letter B, on servants by taxiways, and it shall be by twenty thousand square feet and not sixty-five thousand square feet. Right now, currently, there's a lot of property owners that are below that threshold of sixty-five thousand. So we lowered it, creates greater flexibility, more potential projects that could actually go into the airport industrial park. And it would not have current property owners out of compliance, so. Any questions for this one? The next one, this one, I will read it out loud and it pretty much explains the process that we're going to be taking after this study session, which has the following. The above provisions shall remain in effect for a period of one hundred years and shall automatically terminate effective November fifth, 2078. Amendments to these provisions must be approved by a majority of the city council after petitions from the owners of sixty-seven percent of total lot area. Now, the section that was deleted was deed to land area received, which is to give landowners more voting power. So this would be just the particular lot areas. Yes, it would still include the lot parcels, but not the right-of-ways or not any of the city, of the other city properties that are out there. Okay, and I'll read the following. The city council shall hold a public hearing after written notice has been given all owners' record of the proposed amendments. Said public hearing must be held at least thirty days after written notice is given to all owners at his, her, or its address of records, stating the date, time, and place of said meeting as well as a copy of the proposed amendment. So that's pretty much the process that we're going to be moving forward after this study session. Any questions for this one? So again, we want to give the property owners a bigger voice for what's happening at the airport industrial park. Now, I've come to the last slide. For our outcome, we're working on these new CCNRs to be more clear, to be more concise, and allow more flexibility throughout the industrial park. Want to spare economic development and overall, we want to have a better understanding of the airport industrial park property owners. And this is also a way of us doing good business retention and expansion with the current property owners/business owners at the industrial park. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I see Dave Goss in the audience, and I just wanted to get his opinion on these changes. Are you good with all these changes, Dave? Thank you.
Well, and just thank you to Dave and the other property owners and staff and Fernando for exercise. I know it's been a discussion for years and I'm sure it was a tedious thing to go through anytime you get lawyers involved and it looks like there was a couple involved there. But, uh, but no, so thank you for going through this and thanks to all those property owners that participated.
Awesome, thank you.
Can we go back to the voting slide? And my question is to the city attorney. I understand that they'll be noticed of the opportunity to view and vote. But do we, do we need provisions for telephonic, proxy, mail-in? Because I don't want it to be read that if you're not present, you don't have a vote. Because I don't, I don't want it to be read that if you're not present, you don't have a vote.
So Councilman Huddleston, it's a, it's a good question. But the way that it's written right now and the way that it goes, it's actually a petition that's signed. So, you know, they, what, in springtime, for example, where we say you have to vote by November eighth, if these amendments, once these amendments get proffered to the individual property owners, it's by petition. So they have the opportunity to sign the petition. And until we get enough signatures, sixty-seven percent or more, that signature petition stays open. And so it's not a function of like, you have to vote on the fifth and if you're not here, you don't get the opportunity. Much like annexations where we simply let people sign and then once you get enough signatures, then the matter can be presented to council.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Fernando.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll stand adjourned. We'll start the council meeting at seven-ten.